I've never, in all the years. Do it. It's gonna start up here and it's gonna end.
Of course it would, of course. I wouldn't expect anything less.
You'll be alright, Chris.
Go hard or go home.
Alright, Mr. Jones. Mr. Gallagher.
Oh, yeah.
I want C. Span. He had Investment Advisory Committee upstairs.
Yeah, his car was still here.
No, he'll be back. Alright, if we're ready, we will go ahead and come out of recess and we have the Office of Reentry Director. Thank you for coming when you're ready.
Good afternoon to the Chair, Mr. Greenspan, to also the members of council here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our budget and also to present the concerns that we have as we move forward with the most endeavor issue of reentry in this county and individuals that serve in a second chance. I'm going to, first of all, talk a little bit about the mission of the Office of Reentry. It's to assist policymakers, community leaders, and service providers to identify their reentry challenges facing greater Cleveland and work to target resources towards sound, comprehensive, and cost-effective solutions. We strive to provide the focused leadership and strong organizational capacity needed to address prisoner reentry in Cuyahoga County. If you look historically at the creation of the Office of Reentry, which took place in 2009, the landscape has changed somewhat and I'm gonna see, talk a little bit about this in terms of some of the data that we've been able to collect. The first contracts that we provided were in 2010, so we're in a period right now, in a very important period of collecting good data and beginning to collect based on the samples that we have. Let me give you some data that is really relevant that pertains to Cuyahoga County per se. In 2011, the total commitments, and commitments means that individuals who are placed in prison and who are emerging from Cuyahoga County was 3,958. In 2014 is 2,792, so there's been a decrease of commitments by 1,166 since 2011. The total releases, and I wanna say this because it's very important. Prior to 2011, for at least 10, 15 years, the number of releases were on the 5,000 mark. The total releases in 2011 were 5,043. The total releases in 2014 was 3,248. That is a reduction of 1,441 total releases. We believe-
They're statewide releases.
Those are statewide releases. Those are individuals who are in our state facilities and are coming back to Cuyahoga County. We're still, among all the 88 counties, we still are the highest county in terms of commitments and releases at this particular, even though they have been reduced. We believe that House Bill 86 on sentencing reform that has played a role in the amounts of the blessed commitments to the state facilities. We also can say, and we can, you know, can say not empirically, that the fact that we've had programming in the area of reentry as it pertains to the services started contraction in 2010 has contributed to this particular piece and contributed to the least amount of folks who are returning or going back to prison. One of the things that I then want to address at this particular point is the questions that you brought to our attention regarding initiatives. The first is the Women's New Initiative is intended to provide a work-training program in the culinary areas for women who are within six to nine months of being released from the Northeast Reintegration Unit, that is a female facility here locally. This groundbreaking initiative will mark the first time the women housed at the Northeast Reintegration Unit will be allowed to leave the institution and return as participants in a work release program. The women's population at the Northeast Reintegration Unit has increased by 13.4% in the last two years. Presently, the institution is almost at capacity with 626 out of 640 beds filled and I just spoke with the warden, they're asking them to even add at least 20 more beds or so in the next number of months. We think, we believe that the reason why the increase, it has a lot to do with drug-related issues. The population for women in the state of Ohio has increased by 9% totally in the last two years. In regards to the reduction, there was a $245,000 reduction which focuses on our local incarceration project. This project has not yet been fully implemented because of limited jail space and staff. The reduced appropriation level would allow services to continue at its current level. Delayed implementation is anticipated. It's anticipated to result in 2015 unused obligations that may carry over into the 2016 budget. The Office of Reentry intends to move the project, actually it is moving the project, from its downtown location to the Euclid Jail, which offers a more conducive space for programming. Yesterday, we had a meeting at the Euclid Jail, the Public Works Department, as well as the Director of Justice Services, Ken Mills, and my staff to take a look at the space that will be dedicated for the reentry redirection program, which has two tracks. One of the tracks is for behavioral health, clients who experience behavioral health, and the other tracks for non-behavioral health with an employment component on both tracks and also literacy component. We have been very challenged and I'm just gonna be very candid and very honest with council this afternoon regarding this project because, no fault of anyone, because of the space situation and the number of months where the jail is either at capacity or overcapacity here in downtown. So we felt in order to really accommodate this program that it was much better to go to the Euclid Jail. We were satisfied with the space issue there. We feel there's gotta be some cosmetics and some small renovations have to be made. We don't think those renovations are cost-prohibited, neither does Public Works and we believe by January or February, we should be able to fully start the program. I think what's really, really important because in regards to this program is because we wanted to make certain that it was gonna be sustained. And sustain means having a building, having the space that is appropriate for the clients to be attending sessions, at least 30 session per occurrence will take place. Almost 60 simultaneously, two groups of 30 in each one of the classrooms will be meeting for this particular program. So the important part of this is that we wanted to, again, make sure that it was going to be sustained because the clients deserve that and also because we wanted to make sure that the space is appropriate and that's why we went yesterday to meet and see the entire space and see what are the needs that we have based on the constraints and based on what treatment providers are asking for us to be able to accommodate in order to have the best outcomes possible. So that's the update and it's good timing because I finally, we began to see the light at the end of the tunnel that this can actually take place at the facility. And it's a little more manageable facility, it's a smaller facility, it's easy to access and also it just gives a little bit of an infusion to this particular jail which recently came under county jurisdiction. Regarding additions or reductions to personnel levels, we're not adding any additional reductions. I do wanna say that before we go into number four, is that we have maintained, we're at 72.89% of our total budget continues to be dedicated towards programmatic services. We've been very deliberate since the office opened in 2009 that we wanted to save it in 70 and 75% of our total budget to be allocated to programmatic services. Staffing levels have remained the same since inception of the office, neither of we have added any staff. There are no pending requests for funding for the council to consider this particular juncture. What we're doing also is, in regards to moving forward, the office has begun the process of developing a new comprehensive three-year strategic plan which will guide us in moving forward. Dr. Robert Gleason, who is interim dean at the Cleveland State University Living College of Urban Affairs, is facilitating this process pro bono. We're very, very satisfied. We had our first session. We selected five key stakeholders, including my boss, Matt Carroll, Dr. Vince Holland, Chief William Dennehan, who chairs our Leadership Coalition for Reentry, Judge Cajun Montgomery from Shakka Heights Municipal Court, Dr. Vince Holland, former Chief Probation Officer for Common Police Court, and Steve Kilpak from the Community Endowment Foundation are the five key stakeholders who are gonna be part of this process. This process is gonna move very fast. We expect to have almost all the pieces in the actual finished product sometime in January or maybe prior to that. And I think that will be very helpful in taking a look at what is the landscape, how do we move forward, what are the areas that we really wanna focus and concentrate on. And one of the things that we have been really, really encouraged and we have really feel that we're making some end roads and if you recall, back in 2011, Councilman Brady, when taking office, you had asked to come and see the North Star Neighborhood Reentry Research Center and we took a ride to the facility. The facility had only been in existence for one year. And I wanna share some of the important data because that's the facility which is very unique in its own. The North Star Neighborhood Reentry Research Center is one of the few in the country that is a dedicated facility as a coming-home concept or going-home, coming-home concept for the individuals and their families to be able to find a place where they can come in and be accepted and that facility is dedicated to their needs. We received the first consolidated report from 2011, 2014. 5,078 new members have registered between 2012, 2014. The number of clients who requested the following services, there are five areas that they're coming in for. Number one is employment, number two is housing, number three is the computer lab utilization of that. Number four is driver's license, state ID, and auto insurance. I know early this year, Councilman Miller had requested some information on their ID collaborative that we forwarded to your attention and thank you for supporting this because it's a key area that the individual is coming in for and continues wanting to have those IDs collected and be able to obtain them. And number five is interesting food assistance. I did not expect to see food assistance being in the top five, but that's one of the things that we see. We also wanted to also indicate why the number of visits by clients describe themselves as formerly incarcerated. Between formerly incarcerated and the, there's 52,881 criminal justice history, 4,066. The reason for clients to choose to visit North Star Treatment Meetings, interesting, 13,475 during that period of time and also the computer life scales, 17,896. This data is really helpful because it's really beginning to us to formulate what are the real needs of individuals. So we know that employment, we know that housing, we know that behavioral health are three key areas that we need to continue focusing on as we move forward. The other part that we have also been able to do is began to do mapping. And about 15 years ago, there was a study done by the Urban Institute regarding the areas in Cuyahoga County, primarily within the city of Cleveland, where the most clients were coming from and returning to. And there were particularly areas in the east side of the city. Now, things have changed and let me share a little bit about that in terms of the mapping situation. Regarding the mapping, we have around between 44102 and 4111, close to 1,700 commitments in the last three years. Those are zip codes predominantly, I'm using those as an example, on the west side of the city, not just predominantly on the east side. So when you look at the issue of reentry in its totality, you have to look at it that it is something that is universal and that it just covers the entire area of Cuyahoga County. One more thing that I would like to add regarding the, give me a second here, regarding the information that you had requested. How will we gauge success? Well, let me look at the short term. The short term is performance measures of provided services need to exceed targets. All of our contracts are 60% cost reimbursement, 40% performance base and all of our contracting at this particular junctures have met both, the performance base and of course, we don't wanna talk about the 60% because that speaks for itself. Also, we want a good look at the satisfaction of our clients. The first report, the consolidated report, indicated a very high satisfaction of the services that are received, again, through the North Star Neighborhood Reentry Research Center because that's where the bulk amount of the clients come from. Increasing number of legislative sponsors on reentry policy. Two pieces of reentry policy, key pieces of legislation passed on the last three years, House Bill 86, Senate Bill 337, and now the Fair Hiring Act, who just passed in the House, 89 to 1. We expect that it's gonna be passed also in the state. And the Fair Hiring Act, it really is an expansion of the band-a-box. It's really adding credence to that particular component that many cities, including our county as well as the city of Cleveland, has adopted. Regarding, and a couple of points regarding evaluation of the performance of the office. One of the things that we really strive for, being the first office of the state of Ohio, we have a lot of individuals who seek our information and seek about how are we traveling the waters of reentry and how are we addressing reentry in our county. We've had visits from Douglas County, Nebraska during the last two years, Department of Corrections. Recently, the Tennessee Department of Corrections from Nashville visited our office and visited our programs. The San Antonio Reentry Coordinator contacted us from Bexar County regarding our Going Home to State Guide. The UCLA School of Law has consulted with us because the city of Los Angeles is planning on opening an Office of Reentry, which is the second largest city in the country. And most recent, the U.S. Justice Action Network is going to conduct a bus tour here December 2nd and they're inquiring about looking at the programs that are personally being funded by the Office of Reentry. At this particular time, I would entertain your questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the Director? Mr. Gallagher, Ms. Conwell.
The program out in Euclid, who from the council have you talked to?
No one in particular at this particular juncture, sorry.
But you're ready to roll in January?
Well, we would like to roll because we have been waiting to execute that program since almost a year ago and because of the constraints. We feel the model is very, very good, it's a solid model, but we're anticipating the initial part of 2016 for the facility to be available.
You have build-out in Euclid that needs to be done?
Some, very, very small, very small. Couple of partition walls that would be soundproof in the area that we, the space that we were able to see yesterday. And we've seen it before, but yesterday when we had more of a formal meeting of really looking at what is feasible and how soon can we get this done.
We have no idea about that. Don't you find that odd?
I think we can have further dialogue on this.
It sounds to me like further dialogue should have been a long time ago. Not your fault, I don't blame you. But time after time, we're ignored here and in the end, they're gonna have to wait for us to make decisions, so our phones ring.
Ms. Conwell.
To the Chair, to the Director, and I apologize if I missed. There is a reduction for the local incarceration project, 500,000. Did you touch on that and why that, what impact that will have for the county jail's population?
It's a very good question because first of all, we believe that we're gonna be able to see a minimum of 200 individuals coming into this program. We don't have that number yet. In other words, I cannot tell you here today that the impact's gonna be on so many individuals that we're not gonna be able to see. We still be able to offer the program, but we're not really certain at the amount of, how many less people we'll be able to see based on the fact that it's a new program and it has not been fully implemented.
I'm probably falling asleep here. The 200 individuals you're talking about, are those the women that would-
No, I'm sorry, the 200 would be potentially, which we feel comfortable will be able to serve during this particular piece at the Euclid Jail. The women component, there'll be 60 who will be served coming out for the culinary piece.
Thank you. I was wrong.
Mr. Miller.
Again, on the local incarceration program. Let me see if I understand this right. The impression I get is that this program is just getting underway and that you're able to carry over some money from 2015 to 2016 and that because of these things, you think that in the short run, you're probably gonna be able to serve everybody who's willing and able to participate in this program. But if you get this program fully up and running, that somewhere down the line, the funding level might not be enough. Would that be, would that be a fair characterization?
I think it's always, you can always look at that as a fair characterization. And that's not to placate the answer per se. It's because we, first of all, you need to know how many individuals you're servicing and what are all the needs of those individuals. So you have to take a look at, you know, from a number of different angles therapeutically. So I think that, again, once, not till we have the actual volume of who are we able to serve, will we be able to give you a more accurate answer to what you're inquiring about. Councilman.
Chairman, Director, this sounds like the kind of thing where we need to get it started but then monitor closely and see where we are when we get to next year's budget update.
I think from a model standpoint, we feel very confident. Again, the challenge has been, and it's important to look at not just the model component, but it's important to look at the space where you provide the services. That is really pivotal. We have to make certain that that is space, it's really conducive to the needs of those individuals who deserve that and deserve to be in a situation where we're gonna create an outcome that we want, a favorable outcome.
Thank you. Is this a local incarceration project, is this, I'm interpreting this as a pilot?
I would say yes, it's a pilot. We've been offering services at the local county jail with our literacy program, Project Learn, you know, servicing folks there, recovery services. Our behavioral health entity has been providing services. But from a systematic, from a model standpoint, and having both tracks as well as the literacy track, that is the first time that we do it in that type of model.
Do you administer the GED program?
No, I do not.
In the jail, no?
Within the jail, Project Learn is a provider that does the GED programming.
Why does that not fall under you?
Because it's a literacy program that we have a contracted service provider that does that for us. We monitor that and it's also offered at the North Star Neighborhood Reentry Research Center, which is under us.
And so-
Contractually.
So if I understand, once again, going back to my statement in the previous discussion, that the overarching statement that reductions in funding does not impact service delivery, that's, is that statement true in your area? I mean, you're losing nearly $345,000 in programming between contracts being reduced by 245,000 and, I'm sorry, I take it back, plus 500,000. So you're losing three-quarters of a million dollars in projects and project funding. Are you comfortable with the statement that no services are being reduced or impaired by that funding cut?
What I can tell you is that because the majority of that funding is coming from a new pilot program that we're gonna be implementing, I can answer that question in a year from today and say, this is how I think it could be impacting us. Because I think it's important that we put the necessary, yeah, I do agree, the necessary funding into a mechanism that we think is gonna create a much more favorable outcome. But it would not be fair for me to say today that on a program that we believe has very good possibilities of really doing well and having good outcome, that it's, what the impact is gonna be.
So the $500,000, the reduction in the program was for a 200-person pilot program?
Well, 200 is what we think is the number, the minimal number that we think we will be able to serve.
For what amount? For the full-funded amount or for the reduced-funded amount?
For the reduced-funded amount.
And will that give you enough population to determine, is that a large enough sample to determine if the program is being-
I believe it is a large sample.
So then the reduction of 500,000, it does not overall impact, have an impact overall since we're just talking about a pilot program?
I would say that would be accurate.
Okay, the $245,000, though, in the other contracts, you may have touched on this. What are some of those reductions? You know, we asked questions and we did not get a response from reentry, so that's why I'm asking the question now.
I didn't see the list, it on the list, though. So I have all the other ones I didn't have. That one was not on my list.
Reentry, oh, it's not on your list? Okay. It's under the HHS umbrella. So do we know, what are, what's the $245,000? What is being impacted?
We, for example, Project Learn was reduced by 39%, again, partly because they're part of the component of this program, which is $63,000. Tourist Employment was reduced at a rate of 54%. Common Police Reentry was reduced by 2%. The North Star Neighborhood Reentry Center was reduced 4%. The Women's Reentry Program was reduced by 20%, oh, that's a new program. And the Case Western Reserve Valuation was reduced by 50%. The majority of those programs that were reduced at a high level were part of the model where they haven't been fully implemented. That's why we had the most leverage to be able to make the reductions.
Okay, alright, very good. Any other questions? Ms. Conwell.
To the Chair, to Director Vasquez, on that point, so when Councilman Greenspan asked you, was there an impact in any services and you said, well, 200 is the minimal. So what was the original numbers thought to be for that?
I think probably around, I figure around 300 and that's, again, as an anecdotal figure, I cannot really tell that would be the exact number because we don't know that yet in terms of what the volume is gonna be. Because it's a fluid number regarding the piece at the local county jail. We believe that 200 is the minimum that we can serve, but I could see a maximum of maybe 300 in terms of what the referrals would be coming from the county jail.
Now, if I can, I think her question wasn't on the reduced amount, but on the full program scope. Before the reduction, what was your anticipated-
Number.
Number of individuals to serve?
Around 300.
Even with the 500,000?
Even with that, yes.
Okay, and so what is, what was the original total project amount? Because I only see the reduction. I don't know what the original was.
I believe, the original program, I think, I believe it was 500, I believe. That's, and I need to get back to you in case that is not the accurate figure.
Right. The narrative we have here is that this is an elimination of the program, of the pilot program, not a reduction. So this program is being removed from your portfolio? The system we use to pull this information, if I'm reading my notes, I'm looking, I'm looking back at Mr. King and Mr. McLeer. I believe this was an elimination of the 500, of the program. Is that, it looks like Trevor was going to the door to-
The information that I received from the Office of Budget and Management is that the reduction was to the local incarceration program from the 500,000 reducing to 245,000.
That's not, well, you just made a statement, Director, that the project, I asked you what the total of the project was and you said 500,000. Where we're looking at, the reduction was 500,000. So that's why we don't know how much these possible 200 individuals will it cost.
I will need to get back to that once I speak with OPM to make sure that we have the right numbers, too.
I was looking for Mr. McLeer, I thought he- Okay. We may have the answer. We've got, in one, in our reduction, it says reduction for the project of 500,000, but the question talked about eliminating it, so. Oh, we got, we got the answer? Okay, so- Was the original project half a million dollars then reduced by 245? Is that the interpretation? What's happened? Just tell us-
Chairman, let me try to address this. The reference in your document, the narrative, is not from the reentry budget. The reduction in Louise's budget is 245,000. The reference to the $500,000 reduction in the LIP program, we are trying to find out what that means. We have not been, we've not been told. But that's not, Louise's budget was cut 10%, that's the 245. Now, again, I was speculating to Councilman Miller before that public safety has submitted a reduction in the jail overtime for $700,000 for the LIP program. But, again, we can't do more than speculate what that reference means in the- But again, we can't do more than speculate what that reference means in the budget document.
Let me, Mr. McLeer, when you have an opportunity, can you look in brass and find out where the half million, where the 500,000 came from?
It's in the sheriff's budget.
It's in the sheriff's budget? So is this in the wrong line?
Is what in the wrong line? The question?
The reduction of half a million, is that, should that be in the sheriff's budget, not reentry as far as the documentation is concerned?
Let's double check.
Okay.
But I know the 500,000 is coming from the sheriff's budget.
Okay. Great. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
That went around and around in circles, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So you were reduced, your budget of 10% was the 245,000.
Correct.
We don't know where this 500,000 came from. So going back to my original question, how much was, I guess, set aside for this LIP program for the 200 individuals? Was that 200 and something? Or you said you didn't have that figure with you?
I don't have that figure with me. I can give that figure to you once we get information on this piece.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear. Thank you.
We'll reference that to the clerk to follow up on that. Very good. Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you could please have your opening remarks to the clerk for the record.
Yeah, we made copies.
Great. Thank you. The last item on today's agenda is Department of Workforce Development, Grace Kilbane. We also have, by the way, an updated PowerPoint presentation that was submitted to council during the last presentation. If I could ask, Ms. Kilbane, before you begin, did we receive the answers to the questions for Public Safety and Justice Affairs for tomorrow's meeting yet from the administration? No. Four hours past the deadline doesn't make me happy. We need to review that information before the committee meetings tomorrow. Can someone run upstairs and get whatever you've got to get to us? Thank you. Ms. Kilbane.
Yes. Yeah. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you today and present our budget for workforce, some of our performance, which we're very proud of, and some of the new initiatives that we have that we're very excited about going forward. Just wanted to say that our deputy director and chief financial officer, Jayante Batatarya, is also with me today and can help me out, particularly if we get into the weeds on things since I've only been in this job a little over a year. It's my first opportunity to attend a county budget hearing. I know I'm last, so I intend to be fast. I did bring a few slides that I'll go over, and then we can get to whatever your questions are. So let me see. Can I get my... Okay. Let's see. Let's get it up there. All right. Well, that's, I think you've got it in hard copy.
We do.
What we wanted to do was just kind of quickly go over our first slide there is to give you an idea of our budget. And of course, we basically are working on federal funds through the U.S. Department of Labor under the Workforce Investment Act, now the new Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And so our fiscal year, our program year, is July 1st to June 30th. And so that's what these numbers represent on this chart. So on the left side of the chart, you'll see U.S. Department of Labor. Basically, we get two kinds of funds for them. Formula funds, which come from Congress through the Department of Labor to the state of Ohio to us, and that's $9.4 million for this year. And we also get competitive, if we're lucky and win, or some discretionary funds. And just recently, we've received, as you can see, a little over $5 million in competitive grants, so we've been pretty busy on that. We also get some money from, in TANF, contracts to help out with their programs, Connect the Dots, which is young people aging out of foster care. As you know, Cuyahoga County, you have given us funds in the past. We have three programs that we run for you, the county scholarship program, the OJT program, which is on-the-job training, and the program for ex-offenders, which we cooperate with, with my predecessor here. We also, this year, received a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation to do work in the opportunity corridor to help people get connected to jobs or job training. So we've been doing that for almost a year. And then we also get revenue from our, what we call one-stop partners. And so the one-stop career center system has mandatory partners. They're required to be there so that when people come for services, it's all there in one stop. They don't have to run around town. And they are required to chip into our infrastructure, our cost of our leases, et cetera. So all that funding comes to the board. Under federal law, 10% of it only can be used for federal administration stuff. Most of the rest of it, as you can see, goes out to our operators of our youth program, providers of training like Tri-C, Great Lakes Trucking, et cetera, on individual grants, funding directly to employers who provide on-the-job training and other institutions like Toward Employment for some of our ex-offenders or other institutions that provide services. So if I could move on to our performance last year, so, oops, wrong way. Just to give you some highlights, and, you know, I think that one of the, one of the things that we do really well in our workforce area here, and again, like somebody said before me, I didn't design this, I just inherited it, is to do a demand-facing model or demand-driven, where everything that we do is driven by what do employers need for skills, credentials, to make sure that if we're training somebody, they're going to get a job. We're not training for jobs that don't exist. So as you can see, under our major programs, we have nine performance measures. We exceeded seven of them, met two last year. Over 3,600 people we placed in jobs through our efforts. Some of the key points on that is almost a third were on public assistance. 15% of them were ex-offenders. That's a very difficult barrier when we're talking about hiring many employers, very difficult to serve that cohort. You'll see the number that we trained, 478. That's two ways mostly. Career occupational training, which will give you like a contract or voucher to go to like Tri-C for training, or on-the-job training. And we really only train in those occupations that we call demand-driven. So mostly, they're things like healthcare and manufacturing, IT, construction, areas that are very much in demand, which I'm sure that you hear from businesses all the time. We also have programs for youth. As you can see, we served over 1,700 last year. Of that, a little over seven, a little under 700 were served by our contractors, which is the more in-depth services. And then we have this youth resource center that we run that is kind of open for anyone to come in. We also have a big emphasis on business services. And so again, for last year, you can see, we conducted 339, what we call targeted job recruitments. And so that's where a business comes to us and they say, we need a welder or welders. And we will go into our database, we will find out who has the qualifications that they are seeking, we will set a date to have the employer come in, we will call all of those who have those qualifications and screen them and invite them to the targeted recruitment. So that when a business is coming for that, they're only seeing people who are qualified for the jobs that they are seeking and have had some pre-screening. So you can see that we've assisted in almost 5,000 jobs that were posted. We've referred lots of people who got interviews, and we deal with thousands of employers and businesses a year. I wanted to put this last item on here about the workforce development agreements that we do with, on behalf of the economic development departments of both the city and the county, city of Cleveland County, where an individual business that's getting economic development money from you or from the mayor of Cleveland and is saying that they're going to either create jobs or expand jobs, that they agree to enter, they enter into an agreement with us, with the Ohio Means Jobs, that they will post their jobs with us and that they will consider any qualified candidate that we send. So as you can see, we had 669 placements through that project last year, which I think is a unique project. I'm not aware of anywhere else in the state that's doing it, and frankly, even nationally. So what's new this year? As I said, we're kind of at a unique place in workforce. There's lots of workforce needs as the economy has been recovering, but at the same time, you know, wages have been stagnant, and there's been lots of concern about not having the skills that employers need and that there are folks that we're leaving behind in the recovery. So new, we have a lot of activity this year driven by a lot of that interest. As I mentioned, we have a new federal law which went into effect last July, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which requires us to do a lot of work to come into compliance with some of the new changes in that. We just finished up this year a strategic planning process with the Workforce Board, which is still required and is appointed, as you know, by the county executive and the mayor of Cleveland. And then there's a number of new programs that we either just started during the last year or are at the very early stages of looking at, which goes to some of those grants that we have recently won. Opportunity Corridor Program, we started last November. We've got about 160 people in those neighborhoods' jobs and about 50 are in training. We were awarded a sector partnership grant. We will be training 350 dislocated workers in healthcare, which is called a patient care technician, which we had all three big hospitals come together and agree upon a common job description and job qualifications for that job, which they all need hundreds of. We'll be doing that training through Newbridge Manufacturing in both machining CNC operator and welding, which we're working with businesses through Magnet. And then we're also doing it in the information technology corridor, which we have not identified the specific occupations yet. We're also working on, I don't know if you've heard of this, there's a new initiative which is just starting called Talent NEO. It's only in two counties. It's here in Cuyahoga and in Summit. It's being supported by some national foundations as well as some local foundations. Toward Employment has the lead in it. We've been working with them on about the last year. And it's going to use a new skills-based testing tool called WorkKeys to do job matching and upskilling for workers. So is there a better skills-based way of matching people to jobs that might screen in more individuals? We are, two of our offices, we have four offices, two of them will be doing this testing, and it will be connected up with the sector partnership grants as well. Through our sector partnership, we will expand what the foundations were going to fund, which was for 2,000 tests to another 675. So it'll give us, you know, just kind of a better, bigger chunk of tests to look at across the board. It's going to be tested in a number of different sites all over Cuyahoga County, community sites, et cetera. And so it's going to be an interesting and kind of exciting initiative, which should start soon. We also just recently received, like really recently, like within the last week or so, a $3 million grant for which called Wage Pathway Initiative through the Department of Labor. And it is similar to trying to work with young people. It's for youth that are particularly on public assistance to get them up to a self-sufficient wage. We also were awarded $500,000 for, it's a RISE grant, which is a reentry grant, which is to build off of and with some of the work that had already been done in Cuyahoga County to get these services in the jail before they get released so that they're taking care of getting to be more employable and connected up with employment before they get out. And then, of course, coming on July 1st, 2016, that should be, it says 2015, excuse me for that error, we will be working with the Department of Jobs and Family Services on a new comprehensive case management employment program, which the state of Ohio passed in its last budget and mandated to bring together the WEOWA Youth Program and the TANF Youth Programs. So lots of exciting things, lots of work. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Conwell.
To the Chair, to Ms. Kilbane, the 500K for the ODOT Opportunity Corridor project, is that a one-time allocation or during the length of the project that you were awarded?
We really don't know. I mean, we got a one-time allocation. The length of the project, you know, it's not, the road's not going to be built until 2019. So my expectation...
There was a phase one and a phase two.
Right. My expectation is that the $500,000 that they awarded to us will not last four years. We have right now an extension with ODOT to June 30th of 2016. So I think ODOT will be assessing what they think that they need to do. They had never, that was unprecedented when they made that investment for helping people around a road project like that, get jobs or job training. They had never done that like generally before. So, you know, I think it'll be interesting to see what they do with it. But right now, there's no commitment to go into 2019.
Initially, the history of that, I think, because I sit on Public Works, is in regards to, initially, we had the, all the contracts were supposed to come here for Cuyahoga County residents to work, and the state snatched it back. So maybe that's a generous way of giving something back. That's how I'm going to look at it. Another question on the Opportunity Corridor, you have an Opportunity Corridor jobs program. Could you briefly explain what that is?
That's the $500,000 program that we have with ODOT.
So it's just to train them to do that type of work?
Yeah. We have a much more robust outreach into the community to let them know, hey, you know, if you need some help in finding a job or job training, we're here. So it's a much more focused on Opportunity Corridor residents, but it's also absorbed into our regular operations. So, you know, we basically offer the same things, the screening, training, job placement, registration, et cetera, for, we've got about 550 Opportunity Corridor individuals who are now registered with us for services that we're working with.
Okay. And do you currently collaborate with Director Vasquez, since you stated the reentry population is hard to place?
Yeah. Yeah, we work together. And as you can see, our numbers, plus with our various providers, we have a pretty, I think, good number of placements that we make for them. But we do work with, you know, all of our partners.
And have you, my final question at this time is, have you had any conversations that have been brought in on the topic of conversation for the new initiative from the executives, workforce development budget?
I've been briefed on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just on that workforce development, which we're not going to talk about today, but that's actually falls under Mr. Merriman's umbrella, supposed to workforce development, as I understand it.
I've not been advised of that.
Okay. Ms. Simon, then Ms. Brown.
Sure. I just have a question on the funding source, and I don't know if I should be asking our speaker, Ms. Kilbane, or to the staff or the law department, if the source of the funds for educational job readiness program last year was funded from the general fund and now it seems to be coming from HHS. Now, are there any restrictions on the funds used for this purpose? So that's a question. If no one has an answer now, let us know if we can do that.
I believe that last year, for job readiness, that the funds were general fund use. But the answer to the question that was asked qualifies that PA funds may be used. And the question is, if that's the case, I don't believe that's what was put in this budget. This was a general fund use, correct? I guess, Mr. Glassburn.
The identified funding source for this money at this time is the PA fund.
It is. Job readiness is PA, the 500,000. Okay. And the answer we got to the question was, it's a permissive use. Okay. So that should answer the questions. Thank you.
So that means that there's no restrictions on its use? Okay. Thank you.
Well, the PA fund, this qualifies as a restricted use for PA funds. So it can be, PA funds can be used for this purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a transmutation of HHS dollars into flexible dollars.
Sure.
I guess.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. My question is, you spoke about 350 patient care. Was it technicians that...
Total, we're going to, what we have proposed is that we would train a minimum of...
My question is, you spoke about 350 patient care, was it technicians?
Total, we're going to, what we have proposed is that we would train a minimum of 350 dislocated workers on that grant. 200 of them are patient care technicians, 100 of them will be for manufacturing, either welding or machining, and then the balance, 50-plus, will be information technology.
And the, I guess, you, you also indicated that you collaborated with the three hospitals with regards to the patient care technicians to find a job description that would be suitable for each hospital across the board, is that correct?
Yeah, that had been underway, and actually was brought to my attention by, we have two of our board members represent Cleveland Clinic and, and Cleveland, I mean, Cleveland Clinic and University Hospitals, and they were working on that project, and they brought that to our attention. When we saw the grant solicitation that allowed us to go after sector partnership training, you know, we said, hey, you know, would this be suitable for that? They were just at the beginning stages, and they thought so, and so we brought them together and worked on the proposal, and that was subsequently funded. But Newbridge and the hospitals had come together to standardize that job description, which is like a really good thing to do, because it's, like, they, they all need hundreds of this job a year, but they had different job descriptions, different qualifications, different, you know, which makes it harder for folks to, to know what are the credentials that they need. So by standardizing it, it helps everybody, it helps those of us that are in the workforce community, as well as the hospitals.
I'm, I'm actually glad to, to hear that. To that point, standardizing the job description, the, the last question I have with, with regards to that is, was the pay scale also standardized to the point that there would be self-sufficient wages associated with these new jobs?
Well, there's still three different employers, right? So the three hospitals have agreed on the job description and qualifications and the training curriculum. But they're still in charge in terms of who they hire from that class and what their pay is for that position. Now, of course, if you've got one hospital that pays more than the other, then, you know, everybody's going to be trying to go to the one that does, so then you've got the labor market pressure on that. I think the, I think, I'd have to look it up for sure, but I think the wages on this are 12, $13, maybe a little bit higher for, for your, for entry level. I, I, I can find out what they've got that set at. We're at the early stages, the classes for these have not started yet, but hopefully it's lined up so that in the next month or so, they will.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions? No other questions, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
If you could please get your opening remarks to the clerks, be maintained in the record, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes today's session. Tomorrow, we begin at 9:00 AM with Public Safety and Justice Services. We don't have the answers to the questions, so as soon as we get them, we will get them to you. If they came via email, then I apologize, but we will, did we, I'll look to our staff, did we get them via email?
Mike?
Um, I don't believe so, yeah.
Okay, so anticipate a slower go tomorrow, the expectation is we get the questions in advance, so we can review them the night before, have any questions coming off responses. So I will try to expedite the process, but if it takes longer, it takes longer, and we would encourage the administration to get the answers to us quickly, not only for tomorrow, but for the meeting on the 29th. Is there any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, any public comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will adjourn.